Well, good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Friday, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. And so don't slip my mind, I just hope everybody, wish everybody a happy and festive holiday, Fourth of July, Fourth of July season here, so.
And even though we did get rain, be smart if you're gonna light fireworks on.
Be, be, be conscious of all your surroundings and your neighbors and friends and neighbors. So with me today, I'm John Tranquer, Nyn Flago, myself, Mike Stanis, are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor, Bjorn is for IT, Luann is our executive assistant. Um, Mary is here from the press. And first on the agenda today is Mr. Todd Keeney or?
We got a public.
We do have a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing on fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment. Does anyone have any comments, calls, concerns? Do we want to review the amendment briefly? It's pretty self-explanatory to what, what we were doing, yeah.
I think it's basically correct, it's the same amendment, it was just the posting that went into the paper out of the state, so we had to redo it. So we're just correcting it. Paper got it wrong.
So this is, yeah, this is the amendment that we previously approved and changed slightly, so motion to close public hearings.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any further comments? Moving on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
With that being said, I need a motion to approve resolution number nine seventy-five dash zero six dash thirty dash two thousand and twenty-three for the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and authorize chair and auditor signatures on the record of hearing and certify to the state of Iowa.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine seventy-five dash zero six dash three zero dash two thousand and twenty-three as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Mr. Todd Keeney or Jackson County Engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Morning. So the first item on the agenda, uh, the rural county transportation program, uh, those applications go into the RPA, that committee that reviews and ranks those, um, their recommendation, uh, they received, uh, it looks like seven applications, and they ranked those, uh, and they recommend awards to four different entities, twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Monmouth, twelve thousand four hundred and ten dollars to the city of Baldwin, twenty-five thousand dollars to the city Andrew, and three thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars to Springbrook. So Preston and Springbrook's applications receive the same score, but they used the recent funding as like a tiebreaker, cause so Preston will receive funding sooner or more recent than Springbrook, so. But the amount that you give out this year's was reduced, I think it was like four, four thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars because they took that out to do, be to match their Jackson County City's match portion for the SS four A, the safe routes for all that grant application, they're gonna do safety plans for all the cities. So they gotta have a federally matched to that, so they're using, uh, four thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars out of this program to manage for the cities, cause each city's getting a plan, so every city's gonna benefit from it, so.
And we, we received those apps a couple here weeks ago and, and we now reviewed them, so.
So I asked, so I was just curious, uh, they, RPA sent me the history of the awards, um. So after this award, if you weren't as recommended, like Andrew will, will have been awarded fifty thousand, Baldwin thirty thousand two hundred, Bell U sixty-two thousand seven fourteen, Lamont twenty-five, Miles seventy-four thousand forty-two, Monmouth twenty-five, Preston sixty-two thousand, Sebula thirty-nine, Spragueville twenty thousand nine forty-one, Springbrook twelve thousand three nineteen, St. and Natus thirteen thousand, and Swingle is at zero, so. That's pretty good to get that many communities involved in getting money, so it's just be, I think for next year, make sure out my, and make it a note for me to make sure that the RPA maybe does a little extra work reaching out to Swingle to make sure that, hey, this one's there, if you have, you know, whatever sidewalk, you know, seal coating work, whatever, it's pretty easy to spend twenty-five thousand dollars.
Usually they're a little bit more hands-off, or when I know when I sat on the mayor's meetings or whatever, it was like, a lot of times they didn't even participate.
Well, you know, we promote this as, as probably as much as we can, or maybe not as much we can, I don't know, but we let all the city clerks and mayors know, so they, they know it, you know? Again, if you don't play, you can't win.
Yeah.
You know, so. We encourage, I mean, we don't have to do this program either. It's voluntary to us to, to basically donate to these cities or contribute to these communities, municipalities, um, we think it's a, a need. You know, so that's why we do that, and we, I don't know, we implemented it, what, six, six years ago, five, six years ago? But, uh, you know, again, if you don't apply, you can't, you can't win. So I know the scoring is based on if you receive money in the past, how long ago and such too, so I mean, it goes by a point system, so.
Yeah, they never.
If less people apply, it's more likely you're gonna do.
Yeah, so I think it's like, if you got it in the year before, year prior, it's like seventy-five points off your total. So like the highest point getter was forty-eight points. So, and they had zero deductions, so like if you've got money in last year or even the previous year is like fifty points, you're not gonna, you know, you're, like Swingle's application would go right to the top more than likely they would get funding, so.
So I, I, and I guess, yeah, we'll have to investigate that a little bit, that the clerk and, and the mayor is, I think they had a change of mayors also in the last year or so, so we'll have to.
I guess I'm gonna do, you'd have to watch coming on whether we're.
Yeah, so you're looking for us to approve this?
Yeah, I want you to approve the recommendation from the, or, or for the rural county transportation program, and this goes back to the RPA to get final approved, or this?
This is you're approving.
This is, this is the Jackson County program, so you approve.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty, twenty-four rural transportation program funding as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Now, the next thing is the, uh, this is just a kind of a heads up. Um, the contract with Buchanan County for Alex is set up as a, a sharing kind of agreement, uh. We kind of ran into a little bit of an issue last year where we're paying a set amount per quarter, and we're supposed to adjust it, I believe, in the second, fourth quarters. Um, and we ran into a situation where we couldn't make the adjustment in the fourth quarter because the amount of money that was, that needed to be subtracted was, wasn't available. That's one thing, but a bigger issue is, you know, now that we have Jaden, you know, Mike, and Tom, and myself, I think we need to probably, probably start tapering how much Alex's time is needed, so Alex working on one hundred and eighty-fourth bridge right now, he's still gonna do our bridge inspections, so we're still gonna need him, but I wanna set it up just as a straight hourly rate deal, so he works thirty hours, we pay him thirty hours. Right now, that's not how it's set up, so I reached out to Alex to let him know, hey, I was wondering about doing that, he said he's fine with that, he's gonna check with Brian, Kylie, the county engineer. Um, and I think it sounded like they were maybe booking that anyway, cause they were thinking about setting the cap of the number of hours he works in Jackson County, so sounds like they were maybe progressing along that line anyway, so just as a heads up, when we renew this contract, I'm gonna set it up just as an hourly rate, and then the hours he works, we pay him for, it's not gonna be a, a percentage of his, his, his salary each, each quarter, so. But I still plan on having him do the inspections uh, and assist with design, but it's gonna be as we, you know, if we don't have anything for him to do, he won't be working the hours. But he'll finish working on one hundred and eighty-fourth street plans, these are the, I think this separate bidding and December of this year, so it's just a heads up on that.
I appreciate that, because I, I mean, we've talked about it, I, I've talked about it, and I talked to Human Resources and to Nathan at Conservation, I know the, the Conservation likes to use them, and of course, they're paying for that. But again, I'm looking for your recommendation to say how much you need him or how much you don't need him. Things have changed progressively for us in the last three, four years, so yeah, that, that's your department, we'll have to know what's needed there.
And I think the best way to, to functionally make that happen is just have a pure hourly, so we know like, hey, we want you to do this, like this city in McCoke, if we're gonna help them do something, we say, hey, this is how many hours we think it's gonna do, and it's gonna take, and then this is the hourly rate, so they at least know, it's almost like a consultant, like a designer kind of thing, it's the same concept, like you give me an estimate of the hours it's gonna take, do I agree, okay, then we're gonna pay you by hour, and then keep us informed of where you're at.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a great option for us to have the opportunity to use him if needed, you know? And if he's available, so, um, I mean, it was a good, good thing that happened to us when we needed him more, and, uh, going forward, we'll, we'll decide what works the best.
Yeah, it's not, like, it's not a, a reflection of, you know, what he's done or the quality of work, it's none of that, it's just that we, we have like staff now, we can start, as they get trained, we should start being able to taper how much we need him to do, so. Uh, all right, next item is.
Is, is there, um, action on that?
No.
No?
So I'm gonna amend, we're gonna amend the, his contract, and then we'll come back with the contract, it's gonna be set up as an hourly rate.
Right.
Uh, all right, next item is the three hundred and eighth street resolution. So uh, again, this is my first time through this thing too, so uh, we had the hearing, and then we have the resolution now that has the description of the lands. Um, if the proposal is approved in whole or in part, the board shall establish the district. The order of the board establishing the district shall state the, the roads to be improved, the type of improvement in the lands included in the district. The order shall be final, and lanes shall not be added or excluded from the district after the order is entered by. So the way I would, this, this resolution is your order, you're establishing the district, we have the lands, we have the roads to be improved and the type of improvement. And it also has the apportionment. So if you act on this resolution and approve the resolution, then the, that's the order to establish the district. Now, what I'm not clear on is this assessment levy, are you clear on this?
No, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit questioning the way that the resolution is written. Um, it, it talks about, this is the exterior boundary of the district, does it include the road? Or is it just the property owners in this little description?
Yeah, this is only for the, the people that are gonna be assessed.
So what did the code say? Just go back and reread the code, what did it say? That we needed.
State the road or roads to be improved, the type of improvement.
Okay, so where in here does it talk about the type of improvement?
So it lists the amount, and it just says to be paid.
Is that where we wanna put though?
Are you looking at a resolution nine seventy-seven?
No, no.
Nine seventy-seven is the interest.
Nine seventy-six.
Okay, but this is not on. Oh, you're right, I, no wonder. Okay, sorry.
So as I read it, and we talked about it, I talked with Shelley a little bit about it, we, we, our, our best thoughts was that first, we established a district, the boundaries, if you will, director, exterior perimeter, and then we thought we needed a resolution to, um, spell out the terms, basically. And the conditions and, you know, of, of the.
I thought that was the conversation that you and I had, Todd, was that we were gonna establish the district, we've prepared a resolution today, once they discuss what the interest rate is, we'll get that resolution done also, and then it was my understanding that you're going to certify to Beth what the assessment for those twenty-one property owners are.
Question, did she find out that she could just do the twenty-one and not have to do the twenty-four sections?
Well, his resolution is for twenty-one property owners.
Yes.
Because there was more sections of land than actual property owners, cause some.
Yeah, we're not portioning by sections of land, we're portioning by owners of property. So there are some lots, landlords that have two lots, we're not doing it by parcel, we're doing it by landowners, so each landowner in this, in this described district, there's twenty-one of them, will be apportioned equally to the amount that there's.
So we're only apportioning where there are houses.
We're apportioning by landowners that own, own land in this boundary, there's a boundary, there's twenty-one landowners, those twenty-one are getting an equal portion of the cost. Doesn't matter if they own one acre or ten acres.
So they own two lots, it's one property.
It may be right along that road, or it might be up in the subdivision, doesn't matter, we're all getting.
I'm keeping that, but she was questioning when we were initially talking about this, on if she could do it that way, because like, if they sold off, how?
It will follow the property.
We think that this is a lien against.
You're right, yeah, it goes in.
So then it's against just that one.
Owner.
Which property are they putting it on?
On the owner.
Okay, you can't put it on the owner, you gotta put it on the taxes.
And how are you going to assign that value by parcel? Because you can't do it by owner, gonna treasure itself.
Right, that, that's kind of what I'm getting at, you can't assign it to Nyn Flago. You're assigning it to my piece of land. Your parcel, my parcel of land, well, there's more parcels than just the twenty-one. So you have two lots, how do you segregate that?
That's kind of like a treasure question, but what I would do, say if you own two parcels, right, in this district, then you would take your seven thousand dollars and divide it between the two parcels. I mean, you could do it equally, you could do it straight pro-rata based on the area of the parcel.
I mean, I just think that needs to be.
Yeah, so.
It would depend then on how you do your certification to the treasurer.
Kind of how, I mean, that just needs to be.
Actually, it's the other way around.
Before we.
The treasurer prepares it, and then I certify that it's correct.
But she doesn't know what to, she would have no idea how to apportion that.
So the assessment certified the county treasurer. So this is out of the code, so when the board of supervisors has entered its final order as to the amounts of all special assessments on a given improvement, the county engineer shall at once certify a list of the assessments. Certify a list, so I'm, I'm giving a list, they give me a list, and I certify it's correct. Um, so that was my question, I didn't, wasn't sure how.
I guess it's.
By this resolution, does that? How do you assert, how do you? Like, when you do a levy of an assessment, how does that work? Do you have to like do a separate resolution saying Nyn's parcels, whatever, one, two, three, and four, five, six are assessed this much, and that's your property you own within the district, is that the kind of certification of a assessment that we're gonna need to do, and maybe that would answer Shelley's question of how if I own three parcels and somebody else owns two, that what we owe the seven thousand dollars needs to be given to each parcel, so you can apply that to the taxes for that parcel, or I don't know how that, but it's not, this is not an engineer question, I think that's a.
You guys will get to the front row.
So what, what we're just talking about, Beth, is kind of with this, how do we assess the taxes? When we initially were talking about this, you're like, those that own two parcels, how do I assess it to one and not the other? Type of deal. So how are we going about doing that, because, you know, we're like.
It's not really taxes either, though, you're gonna set up a special account, right?
Well, so the way I understand that it will work is you guys will set the special assessments where you tell me how much each parcel oh.
It's not a parcel by parcel, so it's just with, the way the report is set up is, is you're, we're dispersing it among the, the twenty-one property owners, because it's not, it's not being divided up based on how much you own within the districts.
It's per person, that per parcel?
Yes.
So then you'd have to let me know which parcels to put those on, so if somebody owns two parcels, what parcel you want, cause it can only be attached to one parcel.
Yeah, but, but I think our, you're thinking like taxes. This isn't taxes, cause they're gonna pay you back, and you're not gonna apply it to their taxes that they owe, you're just gonna take it off this other account that you're keeping track of.
So special assessments are treated like taxes. So they'll go to tax sale, just like taxes do, they get treated the same as taxes.
But.
When I do special assessments now, I send out a separate statement. That's a special assessment statement, and it has their special assessment due with the September installment, just like taxes are. It just hasn't due, um, one time per year, so there's no second half due, and it starts to have penalty added on to it like taxes do.
So is that, are you, is that like if they were reimbursing you, like you're putting the money up, but since the secondary roads is paying for everything, all you're doing is collecting that and sending it to us?
Right, so when I collect taxes, and when I collect the special assessment, when I set up the special assessment, I'm gonna have to put that fund that the money needs to go to in accounting, so I'll collect it just like I collect taxes, and at the end of the month, when we apportion everything out, those special assessments are gonna get a portion back to the secondary roads fund that's set up to be like.
Okay, so what would make sense to me is, we would not assign it to every parcel, you would put it on the parcel that has the residence.
The residence. So the twenty-one number is the actual residence, it's not the number of parcels.
Right, it's the people that have, it's the number of people that own property in the district, not the number of parcels owned.
Okay, cause there are some that do own like two, I saw.
Right.
But when you count it out, it's twenty-one owners.
Owners.
That part.
Yeah, so we, I would say, um, for people that had, there's some people that own property that don't have a how, a residence. So you would just pick, I would say, pick the bigger parcel. That's what you apply the assessment, special assessment to, then everybody else that has a house, whatever the parcel, the house sits on, that's what the special assessment gets.
That's what I would say, too.
Yeah, okay.
So it goes by basically of taxable value, you know, to the partial, with the most taxable value would make the most sense, right?
Well, that way, if somebody sells their house, they can't get out from under part of it, it's the assessment's going with the house.
Yeah, you definitely wanna pick the parcel with the house on it, if they own this empty lot, and they own a parcel with the house on it, you're gonna pick the one with the house, but I didn't know there were people that just own empty lot. Yeah, so then I guess that one, whichever.
The biggest, the most valuable one, yeah.
Excellent on it. Yeah, I think.
Is there still vacant lots up there, or are they attached to another?
I think, yeah, I don't think they.
But they truly have their yard.
Well, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They don't want somebody buried next to them.
You know, Nyn Flago may own her house plus another section that's my yard.
But if the person driving on the road, it looks like it's all yours.
Yes. Yes.
So we need to re-look at this before we approve it to make sure it's worded correctly?
So Robert and Pamela Brown, looks like they own a parcel that does not have a house. But there's other parcels that are unbilled, but they, somebody else owns that parcel and the parcel their house sits on, but I think there's one that's owned by an owner that doesn't have a house there, I think it's that Brown, but.
So this resolution is only establishing the district, though, right, I mean, the parameter of the district.
Yeah, I think once, so for what I understand, there's, once you establish the district, then you do a resol, then you.
Fill out the terms, yeah.
Resolution, and then there's another one that comes to me, that's the special assessment where it lists out the dollar amount that I need to assess to each parcel and what the parcel number is, and then I have to collect that over ten years. And I believe it says in here that interest starts twenty days after. So I would have to send out the statements, and then they could have the option to come in and pay the lump sum, if they wanna do that, I could collect it. Um, and I think interest goes till December, then thereafter, if they choose to pay up, pay the remainder of their balance, they have to pay interest through December thirty-first of that year. But I understand that once I get that certified to me, I sign off on it, and then I assess these people and send them out their special assessment statements, and then they'll continue to get those every year from me until they've paid it. But the interest rate established will also be adding on. How I understand it. Uh, yeah.
Can you read it? Yeah, so I think that's right, they, once the, I'm just starting to think of how the procedure works, so this resolution establishes the difference. And actually, it, it approves the apportionment, the type of improvement where it's at, but what I can't really wrap my head around is the, the the assessment and the levy, so the board is levying an assessment against these properties, I feel like that's a separate resolution. And then that's where we list the parcels, like whatever, Joe Blow, parcel number this is getting levied this amount, and then that's all spelled out in the resolution, and then that's the triggers the twenty days, cause then people have, I think it's fifteen days to file a uh, appeal in district court, so I think once that board, once the board approves that itemized special assessment by parcel, I think that's when starts your interest collection date and all that, and then it also, I think, would start the date that we, we would have to wait until somebody could potentially file an appeal. So how does, how does, how do people get notified that their assessment's coming to them, they just? Like, I didn't see that in here either, we don't have to mail out the special assessment, or is that something you always do when there's a?
Um, I only send out the statements, so usually when I get special assessments, they're from a city for utilities bills, or snow removal, or sidewalks, or whatever it is. Um, the city approves it through resolution, and then they send me the resolution, and I just send, I just send them their special assessment statements, I don't notify them at all about the special assessment.
So their notification is when they get the assessment.
Yeah, it, from me, um, I'm sure the city has communication with them before that, to try to collect. But in this case, it's a little different, because we're just establishing this and making it an ten-year installment. I don't know if there's some communication letter that needs to go out with the initial special assessment statement that explains the resolution and what, what you guys.
For transparency, and since maybe not everybody's, you know, up to speed on this, like once, I would say, so the, the board passes this resolution, officially establishes by resolution, the next thing we need to do is have a resolution with the twenty-one property owners and the parcel number that the seven thousand will be assessed against. And then once you pass that, then you send that resolution out with a letter saying, okay, the board has approved the district, here's your levy, here's the, the assessment that's been levied against your parcel, your property number, whatever, your, your, your parcel number, and then that, once that goes out, then the date of that resolution is the date that starts the timing for the appeals or the interest.
That makes sense, and then.
I think that would be great.
With a coin. I mean, and just basically, I'll have what the resolution has in it, but be in a letter form, right?
Well, just saying, you know, based on the public hearing and the board's approval of the secondary road assistance district, here is the resolution establishing the special levies to pay for the property owners' fifty percent of the product estimated cost, that's it.
So the second regulation also gonna include the terms, interest rate, timeframe with the parcel number, or is that, is there three resolutions that we're doing here?
Well, you could do the interest rate one with the assessment, or you could do it now, but I think in the letter, you would wanna state the board has approved, here's a, a copy, put a copy of that interest letter in with a levy assessment letter, if the resolution saying, here's the resolution that establishes which parcel's gonna have the special assessment, and also here's the resolution for the the interest rate the board decided, so if you choose not to pay it upfront, here's what you're gonna be paying in interest.
Right. So first of all, we gotta approve the district, the resolution for the boundaries of the district. That's what we have here.
Yeah, the list approves the, basically the report and the assessment amount and the boundary of the district.
That's correct. Estimate. What? I mean, it's an estimate, the approval is an estimate.
Yeah, but the cost is, the way the code reads it, cost is assigned based on the estimate, not the actual cost.
The wishes of the board.
This is to establish, so we're proving right now, resolution.
Nine seventy-six.
Nine seventy-six. The motion.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine seven six dash zero six dash three zero dash two thousand and twenty-three, establishment of the secondary road three oh eight street assessment district. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried. So, now the next resolution that I have in hand is setting the interest rate for the secondary roads three hundred and eight street. Assessment district. Is, is in, again, is that in right order, are we including this in the resolution? So I'm hearing that we need another resolution, even if we do approve this, to say these other parcel numbers, then this one is assessed to, and then. This is what the payment is.
I would say, I don't know if you actually have to do a resolution, but somebody has to certify, or we need to de- develop that, and I think the best way to do it would be in a resolution.
Well, I don't know that we can't do the third one without this one, because we don't know if the interest rate is, we won't know what the number is.
Well, the, the number that gets assessed is the actual amount.
Plus the interest.
Well, no, the, it's, cuz they can choose to pay it upfront, if they pay it upfront, they're not paying interest.
I know, but we're, but we're establishing that interest rate, so if you don't have that established, how are you gonna put on there, this is, this is the number that you're paying?
Well, I would agree, so you need to have that done, but you could, you could, the resolution that, that you approve the levy and the assessment amounts to. Uh, you could do the interest rate on that too, it doesn't matter, it's really semantics, I just approve that resolution for the interest rate, cuz we gotta do one more anyway.
Right, right, that's what I'm getting at, and I don't know how we can, I, I don't know how we can logically have another one unless we establish what the interest rate is.
Well, the ne- the next, if you did it all in one, you'd do the interest rate, and then, and whereas.
So that's only nine seventy seven is only establishing the interest rate.
I, I, I don't know that we completely agreed a hundred percent on that, but we should at this moment. Is, is the, basically our interest rate is. Covering administrative costs, is that correct? I mean, wha- what's the purpose of the interest rate other than it says that we need to do that, correct?
Yeah, it just basically says you establish it.
And you're using taxpayer money to. Ten years, I mean.
On the final determination, the board shall levy the assessments and all installments thereof upon the real estate within the district as finally established. The entire amount of the assessment shall be then due and payable. And bear interest at a rate not exceeding that permitted by chapter seventy four A, which is what I emailed you guys. The state treasurer posts that on their website, the. Commencing twenty days from the date of the levy. And shall be collected at the succeeding September semi-annual payment of ordinary taxes. So, this makes it sound like, once you've established the district. You, and you set the levy. Basically, it starts right away. The entire amount of the assessment shall be then due and payable. And bear interest at a rate not exceeding that permitted by chapter seventy four A, commencing twenty days from the date of the levy. And shall be collected at the succeeding September semi-annual payments. So I guess you could just establish, establish your levy rate with that resolution. And then there would be, need to be an additional, like you said, Todd, resolution that kind of ties it all together, that says, okay, it starts now. But I don't exactly understand the appeals, cuz.
Yeah, I, I think the resolution that has each property owner listed. The parcel that we're gonna levy the assessment, that's when that resolution passes, that's when I think, that's when the. The interest date, that's the day.
They have twenty days and then.
The appeals thing, or the, uh, appeals district.
The part of the interest, I just kinda see it as like, you're loaning them the money and they're paying you back plus interest.
I know, but we're not here to make money, was my point, I don't think we are anyway, but we're here to cover our costs. You know, associated with it, and.
We gotta watch in case our costs go up.
Wanna have some enticement to get them to pay it upfront, because that's less that comes out of secondary road.
You gotta look at the money that you now have spent, where you could have had it invested and earning interest on your own too. Which is like what, four and a half percent? I have your money invested. Everything earns interest.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So we get the interest too? Yeah, there we go, that's the, but on the, uh, the appeals part, it looks like it's, it's, it's triggered off the levy and the assessment, so. I would say the, when we have the resolution that spells out the amount levy to each parcel, that's the res- that's the resolution with the levy assessment. Once that's passed, when we get that done, that's the, that's the trigger date that starts the appeal, and then it starts your interest collection date, I would say. So back to your question, what's the interest rate, that's up to you guys.
I, I think six percent seems fair. It, it's up to nine percent.
That's the cap, the max. I have a motion of second to set the interest rates for the special assessment at six percent, any further discussion?
Which is resolution nine seventy seven.
This is nine, resolution nine seven seven zero six dash three zero dash twenty twenty three. Setting the interest rate for secondary road assessment three hundred and eight street ass- assessment district, any further discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
So, but, I'm gonna, are you gonna be around? Somebody.
So.
Talking about, you, you give me some, how did the resolution, and then we can.
The final, the resolution where, cuz it says then. The order supervisors has entered its final order as to the amounts of all special assessments on a given improvement. County engineer shall at once certify a list of the assessments and a list of real estate upon which each assessment has been levied. With the specific designation of the district embracing the real estate to the county treasurer. Who shall enter each assessment on the tax books and continue the entry until the assessment is paid. So I think that's our next step then is for that to be certified to me and for me to start the assessment.
So I would guess that, yeah, if you wanna get your heads together and see if that's correct and how we're doing that, and maybe touch base with Mr. County Attorney also. Feel that word.
Yeah.
Doing the way the code is, interpretate, you know.
Yeah, since we're just reading code and trying to follow it in a fair way.
Okay. Back to time.
Alright, next item, uh, hundred eighty four Avenue Bridge Project, so. Uh, this is, this is our federal funding agreement, it's typical standard. I don't know if you guys have a question about it, but we reviewed the plans, Mike and Jane and I last week, or was it this week, it was this week. Uh, so we got some comments back. Trying to potentially, uh, align the stream a little better. Can't afford having to have like a gabion retaining wall behind one of the guardrails, so. We might actually increase the bridge like ten feet too. If we can avoid having this retaining wall built on one of the corners of the bridge, so anyway, so we gave him comments, but. You know, guys, wanna hear that, this is for the funding agreement approval, you guys have questions about the funding agreement.
Money all matches lines up and we're good?
Motion of second to approve the funding agreement for a hundred eighty fourth Street Avenue Bridge Project. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
We'll see when, when the bids come in, but six hundred fifty thousand dollars budgeted, who knows?
So you want a signature on this? Can I go ahead and, and include that in the motion then, to have, or authorize a nice signature?
Only thing I have left on your, uh, discussion is McCook and the shop safety inspected.
Yeah, so that means, kind of, it's an FYI, as part of the safety committee, we, uh. We go around, we're starting to go around inspect the shops, we got a checklist, we look for different things, so this is the form that gets created. And then I give it to like the people that need to potentially do something like, uh. We needed to add a first aid kit to the truck shed. We wanted to paint like, uh, these aisle markers in the shop, so people know where they're supposed to walk and not walk. And then not supposed to pile stuff in the walkways. Uh, the, like, the drill press didn't have machine guard on, so we put the machine, actually it was a factory one that got installed. The other, I guess the big one is, I don't know if you guys familiar with the shop, but this used to be a really steep ramp that went up into the. From the parts room into the, I don't know, like, the other, like, bigger parts, like tire storage area, was. Pretty, uh, unsafe, I would say, so then we just had them take it out, put stairs in, so that's the kind of stuff we would look at. But when those get done, uh. I just fill it out, complete as completed, if a guy's like, right, say Roger verifies it, he'll put his initials on there, and then this gets put in the file. So like, the next, we're meeting July nineteenth, I believe, is the next safety committee meeting, and we're gonna go look at, I believe it's Baldwin and Iron Hill Shops and do the same thing, so. That's just kind of an update of what, what we do as part of the.
Assuming, putting stairs, they have another way of putting larger items in there that they're not having to height things up.
You mean the loading dock? Yes.
That's in a, that's in a separate area.
So if it was a big item anywhere, they probably wouldn't use the loading dock, but that ramp, you should, we shouldn't, we should. We should not be using that ramp to put any big items up that ramp, that is unsafe.
Stairs might be just as unsafe almost. As long as we have a, something else.
So, if they're carrying it, that's one thing, but to like, put it on a dolly and push it up there, no, we should never be using that ramp, which we can't now.
Okay, and you, you don't need to action that, it was just an update, correct?
Yeah, and then the last thing. I like to add stuff, just like you guys do.
When you're adding stuff, can you make that?
I know, I always got you one. So this is just kind of an example of, uh, so this is the road retrieval process. So what's shown there, and like, I would call that dark red, I don't know what you call that. But, uh, that's the work, so we go out with the instrument and we cross-section the road ahead of time. Okay, so we get the lane width, and then the slope, and then the total roadway width at the end there. So basically what's in red establishes a baseline of what was there before, and then, uh. I don't know what you call it, dark blue navy is what it is after the retrieval. So this does a couple things, one. It allows us to. Document the work we've done and accountability of what we're doing, but it also provides a baseline for if we. People, you know, call and complain, well, the road used to be thirty foot wide, now it's only eighteen foot wide, well, we can refute those kinda. Uh, complaints, uh, pretty easily now, since we have a baseline of what was there before, so. And another thing, you know, like I said, we're checking in to see how we're doing, um. Like, just looking at Dark Call Road, that was actually one of the roads that really didn't, wasn't too bad for slope, so if you look down at the very bottom. Uh, it's got the, uh, east bu- or westbound, eastbound lane slopes, two point two basically and two point nine three, so that's not too bad, and then. You just move over to the right, so now it's at five and eight point four five, so, um. Eight point four five is a little high, but you gotta understand, you're talking probably about, when you talk about lane slope. You know, to, you know, having the instrument sitting on a rock, it's a half inch thick, makes a big difference in what the lane slope is, so you're probably at. About a plus or minus one or two percent with these, you know, uh. So if you look at the page, like, on thirty fifth street, um. Same thing, you're right at two percent initially, so we're just over seven, which probably closer to six, and then nine, so some of these are kind of high. But, these are taken right after we just put six hundred ton of rock down on the road too, so each time they go out and blade the road. We're gonna lose some crown, so especially when the rock starts getting compacted. So seventeen street, kind of the same thing, point seven five and three point oh eight, and then we're at six point seven two and eight point five, so, um.
So even with the retrieval here, Todd, it appears to me that the road whipped. What is wider after the retrieval, I, I assume that when we took part of that shoulder or the. Off, that the road top width would be less.
Some of your roads were grown in so bad though, too.
Well, yeah, so if. There are some that are, that are wider than the original baseline, but there's also quite a few that are, are, are not as wide. So what this retrieval process does, is we actually, you know, depending, I. If the lane width was eighteen feet wide, we didn't have them go retrieve at eighteen foot wide, we had them start retrieving. Like, at the width we wanted to, so then we would, we're, I don't say we're narrowing the road, but we're trying to create more of a uniform cross-section. So we don't have one road that's, you know, forty foot wide, another one that's eighteen foot wide, and so, anyway, just. If you guys, we're, we're documenting this, and this will use this as to. To keep checking back to make sure, once we get the crowd in there, that we maintain the crowd and that kind of thing, so.
Did I hear that they start, did they start a milk, or did they do something to milk? As far as retrieval?
Mill Creek?
Mill Creek Road?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if they were, I didn't, I didn't remember you telling me they were over that way.
Well, like, today, I think only have like, a half dozen guys working today. There's a few lucky souls out there that are working today.
Okay.
That's been my, about my biggest complaint is, oh, they narrowed them up too much, and I'm like, no, they're not.
Well, I would say in general.
Well, this is good documentation, you know.
In general, I would say more roads probably are slightly, have gotten the shoulders. When you say narrow, the shoulders are steeper now, so they think narrower, and the other thing, it's kind of an optical illusion, is when you take all the grass away from the side of the road, it's just. Dirt, it looks narrow. Once the grass grows back in, then your, your eyes see like, oh, the road is. That's all I have.
Alright, appreciate it, have a good holiday. Okay, so, um. Are you okay, or you wanna wait for Lisa to return? At this time, we'll take a short, a brief. We convene at this time, and, uh, we are down to the. Visitor section, is there any visitors like to, uh, approach the board today? Seeing none, Lisa?
Okay, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three board proceedings. As written by Honorable Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Motion of second to approve the minutes of June twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty twenty three board proceedings, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewable class C retail native wine license with outdoor service to the Tabor Family Winery. At thirty five seventy sixty seventh street Baldwin, effective August seventh, twenty twenty three to August sixth, twenty twenty four. I'll second that.
Motion of second to approve renewal of the class C retail native wine license. With outdoor service to the Tabor Winery as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine, oh, we didn't do nine seventy eight to begin with.
Nine seventy, oh, we just.
So we did nine seventy five, but I do need a motion nine seventy eight dash zero six dash thirty dash twenty twenty three. For appropriations transfer from the data processing department to the auditor's department. For three thousand and fifty nine dollars, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Second that.
Motion and a second to approve resolution nine seven eight dash zero six dash three zero dash twenty twenty three. Inter-fund appropriations transfer. All those in favor say aye. Alright, aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve an authorized chair signature on the information technology services agreement. Managed services plan and the license code support agreement with Solutions Inc. For fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, for software and hardware maintenance effective July first, twenty twenty three. For eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty cents.
This is a budget, we're good to go.
Yes.
A motion of second to approve the, uh, information technology service agreement. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? This has nothing to do with the, with the. Geo- geoperiminta. Okay. All those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
When I was in Des Moines last week, I received an email from Mark Jopkin from ECIA and I had a subsequent conversation with Matt. Uh, spec from ECIA. This next resolution is nine seventy six dash zero seven dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty three. To authorize Iris to issue a sewer revenue bond anticipation project note. In the maximum amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in order to finance the Dressler subdivision water main extension twenty twenty three project. Uh, I've been in conversation with our bond council, we've nailed and. Um, he requested some paperwork, we've been talking for a couple of days now, but we do have Steve Nails. Approval for you to pass and sign this um, resolution today.
And does this have uh?
I didn't date. I didn't put a date on it.
The seven nine seven nine zero seven zero one or nine seven nine zero six.
Twenty seven, twenty twenty three, that's my resolution. Oh, you know what? It does need to be thirty, so it is. Okay, sorry. So my resolution is number nine seventy nine zero six dash thirty dash twenty twenty three.
It's right on the resolution.
Yeah. I was wrong in my agenda.
So it, does this have? Connection to the grant that the USDA had awarded them for that project?
Yes, and they also have to finance. Up to, the original paperwork that came through said up to a million dollars, but they're actually gonna be financing six hundred and fifteen thousand.
So this has all been planned and everything situated, I I don't know anything about this, so.
For four years.
Yeah, but a long going process and now we're just kind of getting to the. End stages of it.
Yeah, we have all these were signed, we all have all but two or three user agreements signed.
I didn't have Steve's approval on Monday, so I've been kind of pushing this because Matt doesn't wanna wait another. Until you meet again, so I need to get this approved, if you approve it, I need to get it sent off.
I make that motion.
A motion of second to approve resolution nine seven nine dash zero six dash three zero dash twenty twenty three. Uh, the. Iris user uh, in sewer revenue bond anticipation project as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine eighty dash zero six dash thirty dash twenty twenty three. To disestablish the practice of human resources under the purview of the county auditor.
What's that mean?
It means that the, that the human resource department is no longer under the um, auditor's office.
I thought you said humans services.
Human.
Human resource, yeah, services.
I vote for second to approve resolution nine eight zero dash zero six dash three zero dash twenty twenty three. Um, as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution nine eighty one dash zero six dash thirty dash twenty twenty three. To disestablish the practice of the information technology department under the purview of the county auditor.
Motion second to approve resolution nine eighty one dash zero six dash three zero. Dash twenty twenty three, as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for five thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars and nine cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Ninety three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty five cents to Peak Construction. Twenty eight thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents to hometown public, public plumbing and heating. Fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty five dollars and thirty cents to Crawford Company. Hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. Two thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars to Cincinnati Insurance Companies. Twenty six thousand to Advanced Precast Company for a total cost of a hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars and seventy four cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension. Which is the four H Outreach Center for the month ending. Um, this would be, I'm happy, so this would be for June thirtieth. Twenty twenty three.
Motion second to approve the invoice as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. You okay, Lisa? Alright, Lu Man. Would you care to join us?
I will.
Good morning.
Hey, we'll start with the calendar today. Um. At noon today, because it is June thirtieth, the treasurer's office will be closing at noon to finish up. Uh, their fiscal year end work, that's, they do that every June thirtieth they have for years, but it's not necessarily commonly known, so. Um. Next week, Tuesday, July fourth, the courthouse will be closed for the Independence Day holiday. And Wednesday, July fifth at four P M. Is a Wednesday's a possible meeting for anyone that wants to go and then has been going, I'm not sure where this one is.
Do that or innovate?
Okay, the last one was, we had at. Brewery in Bellevue. And then I thought this one was at.
Thursday, July sixth at two P M is the work session on this comprehensive plan for zoning. By Zoom for any of you that wanna participate in that.
Comprehensive plan, or is it just for zoning?
I assumed it was on the. I thought it was on the. Wind ordinance and the comprehensive plan somewhat, because Laura Kurtson is gonna be presenting also. But not sure.
Cause I thought the county, when you called and talked to me a year or so ago, asked me about the comp plan. Like, cause the city do, it is a city comp plan, it isn't a departmental, it it is. It does all aspects of city, where we might wanna, where they might wanted to do subdivisions, how they wanna handle this, why they wanna change. So to see a comprehensive plan for zoning. Is that different than, I know the county is trying to do a comprehensive plan.
I, it is, it is a county. Whole county comprehensive plan, I mean zoning initiated the um, could, the put together of it via through ECIA. But it's a countywide comprehensive plan, yes. So um, I guess if you had questions about what or who there, maybe touch base with Lori. But um, we, I mean, it is in person also, correct?
I thought it was only soon, cause Laura couldn't come down.
Okay.
And the zoning may have been my misinterpretation, but I know that Lori's. And Laura are working on it, so. Okay. Monday, July tenth, seven thirty. A M, tentatively is early childhood Iowa executive committee meeting by Zoom for then. Um. At nine A M on Monday, the tenth is the destination Iowa update. In the community room and by Zoom. Uh, with Nate Jones. It get, it was supposed to. The third got canceled and now he's rescheduled for the tenth.
But I think that might be at first.
Thank you, right.
Yes, yes, he did decide to do it and he's gonna have Zoom from first bill as well. Okay, our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July eleventh at nine A M. Um, at eleven o'clock that morning will be the work session on the opioid settlement summit with Julie Fern. And at four P M that afternoon is the Hookah River Water Shad Management Authority Executive Committee Meeting by Zoom for dawn. All right. The other uh, piece of business that I have for today is. I'm looking for a motion to approve a fireworks permit. For Terry Cravada. At fifty six, three seventy four, highway sixty four in Sevula, and that would be tomorrow. On then, on July the first. He came in this week and I said, I'll put on the agenda for Friday, but it's, and I'm told. I've notified law enforcement and the fire. I said, I don't have a permit yet, but I expect it'll be go, go through, so.
Did you kindly ask him to? Do that a little sooner or later?
I did. He said he's been doing it for years, he didn't realize it was required to have a permit, does that sound familiar?
Forget, do it once a year, yes.
Motion second to approve the uh, fireworks. Permit for Terry Cravada as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Uh, Board of Commissions, unfinished business, I guess last week I did not report on the waste authority meeting, but. We had a waste authority and the um, addition. Office. Community room. Conference room, if you will call it, is just about complete with the fiber and the. Phone is not hooked up yet, I don't think out there, so. Um, they're. Having submissions with their older semi. And they did have one on order, or they did order one, but it is approximately eight to ten months out. So that's, that's the situation that we're in, but uh, the only um, business, business is good. Has been good, so. All looks good there.
Nothing big, Iris wise, basically we're still needing them last few signatures to come in on. Dresslers, because if they're not in by the time that they start the project, they'll. Have just a. Place to tie in and it's all gonna be on them then, they will. Funding that they got for it and it'll cost them a lot more and they gotta hook up, be on top of it.
I did make several phone calls with that night and. I would hope that by now he has several more in hand, so.
I think he said he's down to like. Four, five, and. I think the, there might be one that actually lives there, the other ones are like. They live in vivid or elbridge or outlying areas that are. I know, hopefully not, where they get them in and. Project keeps rolling. They have had some questions about other people. As the line is going by, hooking up. And they kind of, they said that they would put like a T in for them to hook up, but the hookup would be. On them because it wasn't included in the initial grant.
Didn't they approve that, at the last time I heard, they weren't even gonna put a T in, they were gonna have that, that expense. If they don't do it now. That's up to them.
Well, they don't want people tapping into the line later on, so. If they can. Do it now, they're gonna put the T in, when they go to tap in, then them people are responsible for basically that fee of the team.
I know that there is a meeting also scheduled, I think, with Nathan that.
That's coming up, yes.
Yeah, to discuss the.
What the park is gonna be. What they need and what their future plans are and. Stuff like that.
Any other business before the board, if not, I would uh, just wish everybody a happy and safe and. Festive Fourth of July holiday. Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.